Item on our agenda is a public hearing on proposed zoning amendments. Notice of the public hearing was published in the town common.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have the publication date?
Thirteenth, uh, thirteen and then twenty.
Oh, federal.
Mm-hmm.
I'll read the most important parts of the notice. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 48, the Rowley Planning Board will hold a public hearing on petition of the Rowley Board of Selectmen to consider amending the zoning district map of the town of Rowley by number one, transferring a portion of Lot 34 on Rowley Assessor's, uh, Rowley Assessor's map 14 from Business Light Industry District to the Retail District, and amending the bylaw by two revising Section 8.6.5.1 by changing the special permit granting authority for illuminated signs from the Board of Selectmen to the Planning Board three, replacing text in Section 4.0 that refers to other sections of the bylaw by inserting the exact text of those other sections and renumbering accordingly and by adding a grandfather clause for all existing accessory-in-law apartments in Section 6.6. Number four revising Section 5.4 by changing zoning administrator to building inspector, adding limitation on the expansions that are approved by the building inspector and adding standards to guide the ZBA and the exercise of its discretion and small text changes. Number five revising Section 6.2 multifamily and 6.7 New England Village Development by changing the formula used to calculate the density allowed. Six, adding a definition for solar photovoltaic installation to Section 2.0 and allowing such installations in the outline district and the coastal conservation district subject to site plan review by the planning board. That's basically the meat of the notices. Anyone want to make a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion that we open the public hearing.
Second. All's in favor? Aye. All's opposed? The ayes have it. Good evening, everyone. So basically, we're proposing to make six basic changes to the zoning bylaw. I think what I'd like to do is go through each one of those changes, try to summarize concisely what it's about, and then ask if there's any questions or comments on the change. Okay, number one, we're going to revise, we're proposing to revise the zoning district map of the town of Rowley by transferring a portion of Lot 34 on the Rowley's Assessor's map from our Business Light Industry District to our Retail District. This, this is a small parcel of land we're talking about. It's less than an acre in size. It's located on the corner of Route One and Hable Street. It's basically the property behind the Agawam diner, and what we're doing is proposing to transfer that from the Business Light Industry District to the Retail District. The reason we're proposing this is currently the zoning lot line for the Business Light Industry District and the Retail District runs right through the property that we're talking about, basically bisects the property, and actually runs right through the building that's currently located on that property. So this has created some difficulties in terms of what uses are allowed in the building because, you know, the building essentially is in both districts. It's created some problems for our building inspector, and so we'd like to change that by basically transferring this whole parcel, again, it's less than an acre, so that it's, so that all of the parcel is included in the Retail District. We feel that this will eliminate those administrative problems that we've experienced with respect to that particular parcel of land. So that's basically that change. Does anyone have any questions or comments, board members or residents of the town? Okay.
Totally familiar with it.
If I don't hear anything, I'll move on. We would also amend the bylaw by changing the permit granting authority for illuminated signs. Currently, the Board of Selectmen has the, that particular authority to approve illuminated signs. At the Board of Selectmen's request, we would change that to the Planning Board so that if this article's passed, the Planning Board would be the board in town that you would have to go to to get a permit for an illuminated sign. Any questions or comments? Number three, we would basically, this is more or less an editorial change. We would revise the sections of the bylaw that list the particular uses that are allowed for particular zoning districts. Currently, the bylaw, in some of those sections, it identifies as the uses that are allowed by referring to previous sections where the uses are explicitly stated. So for example, the bylaw for the Business Light Industry District may say that the uses allowed in the Retail District are allowed in the Business Light Industry District, rather than actually listing those uses, describing like, you know, you know, assembly warehouse or something like that.
There's a sample if you want.
Right. So basically, what we do, instead of, for each zoning district, instead of referring to the uses that are identified in other sections, we would actually state what the uses are. So this would make it simpler for people to read and understand the bylaw. If they want to know what uses are allowed in any of the districts, they would simply go to the section for that district, and they can see in black and white a list of, a list of the allowed uses. So again, that's pretty much an editorial change. We would also add a grandfather clause to our accessory-in-law apartment bylaw. That bylaw was recently changed at the last town meeting, and one of the changes that it made was that it reduced the maximum size of an accessory-in-law apartment. And after we made that change, we realized that there were some apartments that had previously been approved, had been approved under the old bylaw that were now too big to be approved under the new one. And so basically, we decided it was appropriate to address that situation, to add a grandfather clause in the bylaw that would allow accessory apartments that were approved under the old version of the bylaw to continue to be approved under the new one, even though those apartments were too large, that the square footage of those apartments exceeded the maximum limit in the bylaw. If any of this doesn't make sense, please let me know. We would revise the section of our bylaw which deals with expansion of non-conforming uses in two ways. And a non-conforming use basically refers to a single or two-family home that's located on a lot that is non-conforming with our zoning requirements. For example, if it doesn't have a sufficient frontage and a lot size or something like that, it's considered a non-conforming house or dwelling. And if someone wants to expand that, those kinds of dwellings, in certain cases, the expansion can be approved by someone, something less than the Board of Appeals, but in other cases, it has to go to the Board of Appeals for a public hearing before they can get a permit to expand the home. And what this bylaw does is identify what, what types of expansions can be approved without going to the Board of Appeals for a public hearing. Now currently, our bylaw says the zoning administrator would, would make the determination whether something has to go to the Board of Appeals for a public hearing, and one of the changes we want to make is simply make that, give that authority to the building inspector, just for administrative simplicity, really, you know, for no other reason. It would also amend that particular bylaw to say that if a house is located, if a non-conforming dwelling, if someone wanted to expand a non-conforming dwelling by more than 50 percent, they would have to go to the zoning board of appeals for a public hearing. It doesn't mean that that expansion would necessarily be denied, it just means they would need the approval of the Board of Appeals. And we're making that change to make it consistent with the change in Massachusetts law on that particular issue. Any questions? No? I'll keep rolling. We'd also revise our multifamily bylaw to change the, the formula that's used to calculate the maximum number of units that can be developed under our multifamily bylaw, and I'm not going to go into the details of that calculation, but it would basically change the calculation so that for lots, two acres or less, basically, the number of units that could be developed would stay the same. In other words, this bylaw would not affect the number of units that could be developed for lots of two acres or less, but it would decrease the number of units that could be developed for larger lots. We would add a definition to our bylaw for solar photovoltaic installations, basically solar farms, and because currently our bylaw says nothing about solar energy or commercial solar installations, so we feel we have to do something to change that because these types of installations are starting, you're starting to see them more frequently, and possibly could get one in a row. So basically, we would amend the bylaw to add the definition for these solar installations, and we would provide that such installations are allowed in our outline district and our coastal conservation district subject to site plan review by the planning board. Clearly, we're not opposed to this type of use. We actually, I think most of us are in favor of it, but we feel that these types of installations, they are commercial developments, and they should be subject to some kind of site plan review by a town board, and under this proposal, the planning board would, would be the board that would conduct such review. So I think I've addressed everything. Any questions or?
No, you did a good job. Questions when you got it.
Well, either I did a good job or no one understands it.
Combination of both.
So, okay, I guess, I think we can move to close the public hearing. Does anyone see a reason to keep it open?
Did Bob want to say anything?
Oh, Bob, sorry. Did you want to say something?
No, I just, I think those, uh, these notices were sent to the Board of Selectmen, and I know each member received a copy, and there was no, no problems with it all, so I think we're fine to go forward.
Great.
And the?
I should add, this is a, has been a cooperative effort between the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, the Building Inspector, the Board of Selectmen. We all have sat down and met with each other in, in the, or representatives of each of those boards, and the Building Inspector.
Same Board of Appeals, too?
Yes, I did, zoning board. I have, are members of this zoning review committee that we, that's been established in town, basically, to go over the bylaw and make proposals for, for changes that are needed, and that's how we got to this point. This is a product, really, of the work of the zoning review committee.
Which is still ongoing.
Right.
Yes, so we're going to be looking at some other things, too.
So, okay, well, I guess I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. All's opposed? Okay.
Did you want to make a recommendation?
For what?
To the Selectmen.
Oh, yes. Well, I, yeah, I guess.
You could wait till the end.
Yeah, no, we might as well do it now. I mean, I guess, I think the motion I'll ask for that we need to vote on is whether the Planning Board is going to recommend that these articles be pursued and approved at town meeting. So that's, that's the motion, I think.
Or unless you wanted to work on it even?
We could still work on it. I mean, there's still works in progress, so if the members are satisfied with that, we can, we can vote on that now, or if you want to see the final drafts, we can vote on that later.
I think it's good because most of the material is here. It might be a word or two.
Yeah, right. It's, it could always be edited and revised right up until town meeting, actually, and you can actually vote on the floor of town meeting to make changes, so.
I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I've been going to all the other meetings.
Right. Okay. Well, someone want to make a motion to that?
Go ahead, Dave.
I wasn't thinking. I make a motion that we approve the changes to the zoning amendments that were presented tonight and.
Go ahead and propose them at town meeting.
And go ahead and propose them at town meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye. All's opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. Katrina, what is, there's nothing here with a specific time.
No. It just go one, from one to the next.
One to six? Okay. Rowleyville is green, Charles Construction. Is anyone here for that?
Well, the, the Butters are.
Oh, okay.
And also, I believe Larry has, has some reports also.
Okay.
I think what I gave you as attachments are several emails and reports, several from Larry concerning a retaining wall at the entrance, changes, changes to the drainage system, trees in the no-cut, no-disturb zone, and the location of drainage and rip route in the easement located at the rear of the Ruble property on 61 Main Street. And I believe Larry has an update for the board.
Do you want to address?
Sure.
What the issues are, Larry?
Yeah, just generally tell the board that, you know, construction has proceeded out there through the winter months, is, up until the last few weeks, is, they've moved along with some cooperative weather in getting some of the road base in up to where they could put in foundations for the first three buildings, first on the left and two on the right. They've constructed fill across that low area as you go into the site, over about half of the road to access the site, put the water line in from Main Street into about 200 feet, and constructed a drain which goes across at that low point into the wetland that drains a small area behind the Ruble property and a small area that, that comes down out of the no-disturb zone that was protected. A number of things have come up that has taken quite a bit of the new engineer's time and my time as well, and the reason for that, I think, can be explained, is that the, the design engineer is, is no longer on the job if he's in business, so the engineer for the developer is now needing more group, and we have together had to work through some of the issues that have come up that I would say to, to try to be sure that the design intent was accomplished as well as putting the practical construction spin on it to get the job done. And Katrina hit on a few of those. One is the retaining wall on the left as you go into the property. I made a recommendation to the board of bringing that wall up a height of two-block high, or 16-inch block, and actually be about two and a half block high, to construct a curb on that side of the street that was not on the original design plans, and between the curb and the wall to construct a timber guardrail. Put that guardrail post right up to the face of the block wall. The block wall itself is not structurally designed nor constructed to act as a retain, or as a guardrail for vehicles. And at one point, we have about a 12-foot drop-off there, so my recommendation then was to have the block wall, have the wood guardrail, put a curb there to hold that gravel shoulder. We're going to increase the width of the gravel shoulder a little bit to accomplish this. And the developer as well as the design engineer has agreed to do so, and I just got some information on that today, which I have not reviewed, but it looked like it was in concert with my recommendation. So I would like the board, I guess, to acquiesce, if you would, to, to that. That's, that's one thing.
Before you go on, can I ask you about the, so the, the guardrail is going to be seven feet high?
No, no. There were two letters from me. The first, the first spoke about bringing the, the block wall up as high as seven, seven feet. After looking at that, I decided that was a bit of overkill. There should be a follow-up letter in there.
Okay.
That superseded that.
Yes, it seems like it overdid it when I read it.
So it'll be roughly two and a half block high, which is about three feet now, and it'll have the handrail on top of that, which is.
These are the plans you just sent to me? I think these show the revisions, right? You're incorporating your recommendations?
Yeah, they probably won't understand that, that one too well, but this section right here is a good representation of what that's going to look like. So that, that's, that's one item. We want to move on from that.
So just, if you're on the roadway, the wall will raise above?
Above the edge of the pavement.
From that side of the wall, there'll be what, about two feet of?
About two and a half from the roadway side.
Right.
About two and a half feet a block, and then you'll have a, a handrail.
Okay.
On top of that.
And what if you're on the?
And you'll have the guardrail in front of it. So, and I don't, no, that doesn't depict the guardrail.
No, that doesn't show that.
Yeah. So I, I haven't seen this yet.
Oh, okay. But that's, that's your proposal, that the guardrail be in front of it all?
Correct.
Right. So from the other side, how, just curious.
The other side, all you'll see is the, the block itself. It's a double-faced block, and the top rows are exposed on both sides. You will see the fractured face block.
And how high is that?
At some points, up to 12 feet.
Really?
So it goes from that, that point and gradually slopes up to nothing on both ends. It's about 200 feet long. Another item which has come up is the.
Can I see the Butters? Your name, the Rubles?
Yes.
If you have any comments or questions as we go through these, if you want to ask Larry or us questions or comment on?
Will there be drainage for the water to go out where you're proposing this new?
Well, there won't be, there won't be any drainage trapped in the road, if that's what you're asking. There's, there's catch basins in the road at that low point that carry that water back to the.
Is that towards our property or away?
No, no, it's, it's back away from the property. And I think we're going to talk about other things with respect to drainage for them. Another item is, in the no-disturb zone, which the board wisely protected in the permitting process for the Butters over toward Merrifield, right at the edge of that no-disturb zone and right behind a couple of these buildings are two very large pine trees. I have recommended to the board that they permit the developer to take those trees down at the, they're actually in the no-disturb zone, but they're just inside of it.
What kind of pine trees? White pines?
They're, they're big white pulley pines.
Terrible trees, yeah.
Yep. And to, to remove those trees now while they can, when there's no, you know, buildings right up against them, for the obvious purpose of, you know, protecting life and, and property because wrong kind of wind, you know, they could easily come down. And they've been protected by the forest, which is no longer there, which has been.
Probably come down.
Yeah, so they probably will. And in, in place of that, to place three coniferous trees in that area or in other areas as we might see fit that will actually provide more of a buffer to the, to the Merrifield side than these trees are, because these trees are tall. these trees are, because these trees are tall and all the buffer is up there. It's not buffering what you see through the woods. So to put some shorter coniferous trees in their place, I see as a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, well, that makes sense.
Did any of the underplanting go in in the fall yet or?
Oh, they all went in.
Okay.
They all went in. So I think.
Looks pretty good.
Can you tell how they're doing it or is it too early? Can you tell how they're doing it or is this?
I haven't looked at them pretty much since they went in. But we do have a provision in there for us to assess them.
Right.
And to come back and replant if necessary.
We'll know more in the spring.
Another item which came up, I'm trying to think what else it was besides the drainage behind the abutters here, so, oh, well, it's a combination of both the landscaping and the drainage. Talk about the landscaping first. This plan. Might have to share a couple of those, I'd make a whole lot of copies. This plan shows on the first sheet in green. No, that's a. Shows in green what the planting plan, which was approved, proposed, which is on the left side in green, to the north, five white pines, and to the south, two blue spruce, white spruce, I'm sorry, and two blue spruce. In yellow, across the way there, there was some proposed conifers as well as a linen tree. Essentially, none of that works anymore in the specific location that is shown. If you look at the next sheet, I believe. In green, the green swatches there that I made with the magic marker are where we could put those seven white and blue spruces and still accomplish essentially what we were setting out to do, and that is to provide some screening between the roadway here and the abutter at 61. 61. And in yellow, on the opposite side of the street, where we could put those same four trees over there, the linen would basically stay where it's shown and to put the three coniferous trees behind where we inserted three overflow parking spaces. So I'd like the board actually to grant me permission to work that out in the field when these, you know, these improvements are made.
So what's necessitating the changes? The overflow parking?
No, well, that is on the yellow, yeah, that's necessitating that change. On the green side, if you look at that second sheet, you'll see just to the left of where it says PD MH2 and PD 4. That is a drainage way, if you will, that collects water from up in the, behind these dwelling units, not from the road side, but behind them, and directs it into what's been already constructed, a riprap, small basin with a pipe that goes across the road and into the wetland.
This is a picture of what it is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the first plan actually proposed the plantings right where that is, so obviously they can't go there. So that's why I need to move them to the east, straddle that pipe that's labeled on here, PD 1, and that's the reason for wanting to make that change. Lastly, and in that same area, and dealing with the same situation, I think that the abutters might want to reflect on this evening, is that drainage swale itself. That swale, as I can best discern, has been constructed where the plan called for it to be, the pipe is constructed where it's supposed to be. Most of that riprap swale that Katrina just showed you is on the development side of the property line. A small degree of it is within an easement on the abutters property. And the question has been asked by them if that riprap could be moved off of their property and more, putting this swale more are all onto the development side of the property line. My answer to that has been, yes, it can be done if the developer wants to do it, and I say that because I think he's built the plan according to the approved plan. But if he chooses to do that at the request of the abutter, my only issue with it if we don't move the pipe, and he's probably not going to move the pipe because that's in there and well-covered and there's a water line going under it and lots of issues to move that pipe. What it's going to do is to move that one-to-one riprap slope that's on the abutters property over and to get it off the property and to retain the volume of that little basin that we need, we're going to essentially have to tilt it up and build a wall. And it's going to be a shallow wall, it might only be two or three feet high. I'm not sure that's the most desirable situation to have there. I don't think anybody's going to get extremely hurt if they go running through their backyard and run over this thing, but, you know, they might fall over it and fall into the rocks. I've said in my communications to you that if the developer wants to do this, that's fine, the wall will have to be built, we'll minimize it, but as far as I'm concerned, he doesn't have to do it because he's built it according to the plan. And, you know, these folks are here, they purchased the property with the easement there for the drainage, and, you know, if they can work it out with the developer, I'm sure the board would, you know, want me to work it out the best we can.
Sure, so you understand, we approved the plan, you know, a while ago, probably before you bought the property, I'm not sure.
Yes.
And from what Larry's saying, the developer has built this consistently with the plan, so we really can't tell him to do something different. We're really not at that stage, but it sounds like if he's willing to make that change, if you actually think that's better.
So would you consider this to be a structure?
As it stands now?
No.
Or is it a structure?
In some definitions, yeah. A riprap swale, headwells, they are structures. In some definitions, no.
In our easement, we're not allowed to build any structures on our property where this easement is.
Well, I don't know how the rally, I think we'd have to go to the definition in rally, and I don't know what that is right off the bat as far as structures unless it refers to a definition by state, but some bylaws and subdivision rules and regs consider something like that a structure. A riprap swale, a structure, some don't.
That does not sound like a structure to the easement, but they were meeting by as structure as a shed or.
Probably.
I would think so.
Yes, built because zoning would not call riprap a structure.
But is your point that you like to build a shed or something like that?
So I understood that, you know, the land would have to be graded so that water would drain off of our property, which is great, but there's now rocks on about a quarter of this riprap on our lawn, on our property, which to me is a little bit confusing because.
Well, you're saying it's actually not, right?
No, it is. If you look at that picture.
There's a property line on the street.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Yeah, so I'd say, you know, maybe a quarter of the riprap, maybe a little bit less, is on their side of the property line. But again, it's, it is.
Well, it sounds like, number one, you have to work this out with the developer and see if he's amenable to changing it.
So I've spoken with him, and he, you know, he's willing to work with me, but he said that he's just building it to plan. He doesn't want to deviate from his plan without the approval of the board or.
Well, if the board wants to authorize me to work with the developer, again, if he wants to, then we'll, you know, we'll facilitate this change and get as much of the riprap off of your property if you understand that you're going to end up instead of with perhaps a sloped riprap, you might end up with a more vertical riprap or even having to bring in some fieldstone, you know, on the bottom side of it. So it's workable, as far as I'm concerned, if he's, he, the developer's willing.
If I could add too, when I spoke with Holly, when she came to the office, you were really interested in having a set plan for the landscaping, right? And we talked about creating a landscape plan on their side of the riprap because there were trees there that were taken down, and there will be trees planted, but they kind of want to set plans so they know what to expect and to make sure there's adequate screening.
That's what I was thinking, that the landscaping that has been proposed and approved on our plan, it's all on their, on the developer's side of the land.
Right, exactly.
And maybe they get better privacy in this negotiation of the riprap, et cetera, if you.
Well, that, if you look at the third.
Trees go on the other side.
Yeah, look at the last sheet of that, which is why I brought it in, because it's a bit problematic, if you will.
It's not a space, yeah.
If you can imagine that pink area.
The drainage pipe which crosses the road is exactly on our property line as well.
In addition to screening from the development, we assumed that trees on the original approved landscape plan would provide screening for this drainage area, which is now not possible.
The, my concern about putting trees there, and I certainly would say that if there is any agreement to putting trees there, that the Board of Health should condone it as well, is that your leach field, if we backed all the riprap right up to the property line, it looks like we'd have roughly 11 feet between your nearest leach line and that wall to put any screening in.
Between their leach line?
Between their leach, right, yeah, yeah. And my concern would be, what kind of screening can we put in there? Can we put arborvitae's as close to the property line as we can toward the developer without the, or some type of screening plant like that, without creating perhaps, you know, root intrusion into that, those distribution lines? And I wouldn't want to be a part and party of that. So, you know, I definitely want, you know, the Board of Health to look at it and say, that's okay, the developer agrees to it, Board of Health looks at it, you accept the responsibility, and if there's, you know, a foul leach line there, it's not, it's not as a result of something, some accident that this board took, you know, lightly to do so.
I think, Larry, I think your suggestion is good, sit with the developer and the neighbors and see if something is possible. It makes it better for them and just equally is good for the developer. I mean, there's a cost in there someplace, but.
Yeah, the smaller arborvitae's, I mean, we're going to have to put something in there small that's not going to grow too high, very high, that's going to block, you're seeing the buildings, it might block, you're seeing the riprap swale. But anything that you put there that's going to get any height to it is going to spread out, even a spruce or something is going to spread out and go over to those leach lines.
There were taller trees originally.
All of the trees that were there were taken out so that we could grade it. The grading changed by, I want to say, five to six inches where these trees came out. The whole reason for those trees to come out was so they could grade what I would assume to have been, to a greater extent.
The trees that were removed were very tall, although saplings.
Yes, but they were, they were there before this new leach field was put in.
Yes.
Their roots have not, did not have a chance to do anything to your leach field.
Okay.
And if you put new trees in there now, you get some dry periods, they're going to reach out and try to find the water, and the water's going to be in your leach field. So I don't have a problem with doing it. I just don't want to do it without the board knowing what the, and the, and the abutter knowing what, you know, could be an issue here, and the Board of Health signing off on it, and everybody saying, okay, it's not, it's not a unilateral decision by the Board to do this.
Arborvitae's would give an end or a definition to where the, where your property ends and where theirs begin, and their roots are fairly shallow. My recollection is that they are within five feet of my subject system.
Would a fence be considered a structure?
I was just going to say, would some kind of fence?
No, well, it can be considered a structure in some instances.
Well, but again, isn't that up to the developer?
Yeah, if he wants to.
If he says that he's not bothered by a fence, you know, if he's willing to put it in for you.
Yeah.
That might be the way to go.
That gets rid of the root problem.
It's really not a zoning issue, it's because it's an issue of, he owns the easement, and under that easement, you can't put structures in there, but he can decide, okay, go ahead and do it.
Under the easement, you can build structures as long as they're approved by the planning board, so.
Oh, okay. Well, if it's, I think the answer to that is if it's okay with the developer, we'd approve it, okay.
All right.
Why don't we have Larry, the developer, and the neighbors work on a good proposal and then go back to us?
I think that Steve Mastis has been constantly talking to these folks. I think there's an open line of communication, it's just that we had not gotten before the board to discuss this, gotten direction from the board to me to, you know, to try to work this out and bring it back to.
Well, they seem like a great, great developer.
I mean, if everyone's in agreement and Larry looks in and says, this is fine, you know, from my recommendation to the planning board is we should, we should approve this, we're going to approve it.
There's been a lot of communication between us and, verbally, and I just would have liked to have those kind of out in the open with you guys so that down the road there doesn't, there's not a problem or something that, you know, we didn't understand or something.
Right. Well, I think the time to do this, to make these changes, is now.
Correct.
Right now, so we can. And I think you guys, I've worked through a lot of developments in the 30-plus years I've been doing this, 40 or 50, I guess. You guys are lucky that you have a developer neighbor, as I've seen him to this point, because he's been extremely accommodating. His contractor on the site has done absolute everything that I've asked him to do and then some before I asked, and so far, you know, so good. So you guys are fortunate, I think, to have that kind of relationship. So I'll get together with him, we'll see what we can, you know, see what he's willing to do. Let me just ask you now, is a fence preferred over, you know, a six-foot solid fence preferred over greenery or? That's something you can, you can call me about and tell me later, too.
I'm sorry.
You can think about it and let me know later, but it.
I would say that is a preferred option of ours.
The fence would be?
Yes.
And it would be a fence that can't be on the property line because there's riprap over the property line, right?
Well, if he could move the riprap back in and install the fence, I think that's what I was thinking about, our, you know, you know, it depends on how far.
We can.
To me, that sounds like the way to go.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, I think that's all the kind of issues that had come up.
Now, would you like this all summed up in a letter from the board, giving you the go-ahead?
Well, I don't need that. I think I can take that verbally. I'd like the board to grant the removal of the trees, the change in the retaining wall with the guardrail and the curb and.
Have any of the other abutters been notified of these trees being removed?
No, no, no. And I, you know, my advice to the board is and was that this is a minor modification if we were going, you know, to be wiping out one or more trees in there of a different nature other than these and not replacing them, but I think we're getting more back than, you know, than we're taking out. I mean, if we got one more, let's say, an arborvitae in place of the one tall pine tree, we're probably ahead rather than breaking even. I'm asking for three, three for one, so.
Okay, well, I think I'll ask for a motion to approve Larry's proposal with respect to the removal of the trees and the modifications to the retaining wall.
Is that good?
Some move.
On the favor, aye? I'll propose you guys have it.
I'm heading to work with, yeah.
Yeah, we have our.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, thank you.
Because we can work something out where you're happier.
And we have a vacancy on the board here.
Yes.
They're close enough.
Okay, eight Turkam Memorial Drive with certificate of completion.
Oh, could we, could we? Oh, could we, could we skip through, because I don't believe anyone is here for that one.
Okay.
And we do have the A and R that we were trying to get in at 8:30, but we do have Down River Ice Cream, I believe, here.
Hi Ted, how are you? Good to see you.
No, I haven't. We just have to see if they're there. Okay.
Skip through to the A and R, is that what you're saying?
Well, they were, before them on the agenda, and so if John Moran is here, they, they should get first chance, but if he's not here, we can skip to the A and R.
We haven't seen you for a while.
I know. Haven't seen you for quite a while. Nobody's changed, everybody looks the same.
He is here, so...
Want to take them first?
Yeah, we'll, we'll let them go first and see if that's okay.
That's only theory. Evening, John, how are you?
Good. Hi, good evening, for the record, my name's John Moran, I work for the EB Moren Group. We're here tonight to give the Board just an update on the project located at 120 New Report Turnpike, or Down River Ice Cream. As the Board may recall, Amy Ahern was in here last spring, Amy's here tonight, for a permit to renovate one of the existing buildings on this property into an ice cream stand. At that time, the Board had looked for some modifications to the existing entrance into the property.
John, can I ask you a question before you get too deep in this? I understand one of our members has a conflict of interest.
If you have nothing to do with the building, I don't have a conflict.
I had nothing to do with the building.
Are you the architect for the ice cream stand?
Yes.
Should I recuse myself?
I think so.
Are you, are you going to need a vote from the Board tonight on anything?
I think we're just trying to get, give the Board an update and...
You can give us an update, but if you require a vote, we only have three members here, so if you require a vote, I would suggest you may want to come back at some other time, but you can certainly give us an update. And we can give you the, the two members who can speak to this can give you our sense of how we feel about it.
Well, that's probably what we'll have to do, and then return when we have a quorum. We're probably looking for a vote, and I'll explain why.
Okay.
We can stay here. Back to the project, we had actually done the survey work out on the property. As part of the project, the Board had looked for modifications to the existing entrance. The existing entrance into the development is approximately 50 feet wide, it's a one-way entrance, it's got two accesses coming in. Larry, your consultant, had some concerns with regards to that entrance, with regards to the existing parking over at the ice cream, proposed ice cream stand. So there's some proposed modifications to the entrance, to try to close it up, make it more consistent with a one-way entrance, 20 feet wide, vertical curves to demarcate the entrance coming in. We had filed with Mass DOT in September, received comments back from them late September, responded back to them mid-late October, didn't hear anything, called them, called them, called them, called them, called them, got a response February. And they wanted some modifications to the existing entrance. You may recall, or some modifications to our proposed changes, they were really strictly increasing the radius on the turn radii coming in on the southerly side of the entrance. Also, they would not allow us to build that fence out in the right-of-way, but they would allow us to plant a hedge row. You may recall Larry actually submitted a letter to the Board saying that he was okay with substituting the row of hedges for the fence. At that time, we had submitted a revised plan to Mass DOT dated February 7. Got a response back that plan looked good, put in a letter, get it to us. Very next day, I get a response back saying, "Nope, we want you to modify the exit now, and we want you to modify the entrance even more." So, right now, we're still trying to iron things out with Mass DOT. Now they'd like us to modify the exit, change the entire turning radiis coming out, end up losing the parking space. The only modification they really want now to the entrance is change the 20-foot radius to a 30-foot, which we can do, but we haven't submit revised plans yet because we're still trying to work out this whole deal with the exit. I'm not even sure that the tractor-trail would be able to traverse this exit. Also, I don't think my client can give up one parking space, so we're trying to deal with this issue now at the 11th hour. What we're here tonight is to get permission from the Board to allow Amy to open. We're looking for March 15. I know as part of the original approval, we had to have these changes performed, however, Mass DOT is not going to authorize a permit to do part of the work without issuing the whole permit. So we're still trying to iron out this issue, and I just don't know how long that's going to take.
Could you say that again, Mass DOT is not going to what?
They won't issue a permit for partial work. They're going to issue a permit for this property, and it's either going to be for everything or nothing.
And you can't open until they issue a permit?
Well, your permit required that we make the changes to the plan before she could open in 2013, or make the changes to the entrance. So, we're hoping to get this resolved within the next, you know, few weeks to the month, then get the permit, don't know, you know, it'll probably be a few weeks for them to issue the permit, then get a contractor lined up. So, we're still confident that we'll get the work done before her busy time comes, which is going to be June, July, August. But, you know, we don't want to miss the window at the beginning of the season, March, April, May, and that's why we were coming tonight, to try to get permission from the Board to let her open based on the existing conditions. We looked into accidents in this area, I think there's been a total of four in the last 10 years, so there doesn't appear to be any major issues with the existing entrance. But that's why we're here tonight, to discuss with the Board the possibility of getting a permit to open up without having that Mass DOT work completed.
Do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I think what John is probably going to get to, but hasn't touched on yet, is the, the Board's approval required them to do the modifications, which he's been trying to work through with Mass DOT. But the Board's approval also said that if he couldn't get that done, or couldn't get a permit from Mass Highway to do so, that he could, prior to issuance of an occupancy permit, put in some temporary half whiskey barrels around that, that curb radius, so if you recall that. And isn't that what you also want the Board to do tonight, or is that what you think might require a vote, a minor modification, or, I don't know where you're at with that, but it's in there. So I, I don't think, I don't think the Board has to vote on it, per se.
Right, yeah, I remember that now.
All that they were required to do was to show good faith in applying to Mass Highway to do what was required on the site plan, and if they couldn't, to, that they could put these interim planters in and get their occupancy permit until they can get past that way.
Now, what about the hedge row? Couldn't you go ahead and do that now?
It's in the right-of-way. And that's the other issue, with regards to those whiskey barrels, three of them, actually four of them are actually in the state right-of-way, we can't do those either.
Okay.
So really, we're back to, I'd move one of them back, it'd be putting in five, and that's kind of what you see in here. I was hoping that we could actually get a permit without doing that. The fact that we're going to be trying to get the permit by early May to do this work just to try to cut down on the costs, or try to come up with something else that we could put out there other than these whiskey barrels, because they're not, they're not that cheap. And once we're done with them, there are really no other place on the property to put them. So, we're going to spend the money for these things, we're going to have them for a month, and then we're going to have nothing to do with them and just get rid of them. So we were looking for the potential of maybe an alternative to those. Instead of putting, actually, we're looking for an alternative not to put them in at all and leave the entrance the way it is for the time being, but if we did have to put something in, you know, an alternative to it that would be acceptable to Larry, we could make a proposal and use those instead. But again, I don't know if you'd have to vote on it, but the original plan had four of those planters rounding the, out into the town, the state right-of-way, and we wouldn't be able to do those right now.
No, no, actually, you don't need to, because the, the approval says that the applicants unable to obtain, they may see approval for the interim planters, they shall be relocated to the outside of Route 1 right-of-way, in a location reasonably acceptable to the Board, so I think you can do exactly what you want to do. And, and you can do what you want to do, and as far as, I don't care whether they're real whiskey barrels with the bands, you know, half whiskey barrels, with the bands around them, I think you can go to Home Depot and get some pretty gosh darn big, you know, planters for a reasonable price and use them, but if they're too ugly to use when you're, when you're finished with them up around your, your facility there, you haven't spent a whole lot of money. I, I don't think, the objective is to get something big enough and bulky enough out there with a plant in it that people are going to drive around it instead of drive over.
It has to be beautiful.
Yeah, it is, it's not, it's not for beautification, it's...
True. Now, but what about the other issue of the fence or the hedge row? I mean, as I recall, we were concerned about children just running out to Route 1 and getting hurt.
Yeah.
Is there something else that...
It's something that there, I don't think is as much flexibility in as there is with the, with the intersection. And because it says prior, prior to reopening the facility, the applicant shall cause to have the strip of landline between Route 1 and the six-space parking area landscaped in the plan submitted, I guess that's part of it. And then the other part, have installed a two, a two-rail post-rail fence with green vinyl coated wire attached to the westerly side, and the state says they can't put that there, and so I sent them a letter to the Board a month or so ago now, that I would be okay eliminate the fence as long as they put a, a, planting's in there such as roses or something that nobody's going to run through, you know? It's going to say, "Whoops, I'm not going in there," and keep small kids from going out there, so. But I, I don't know if the state's not going to let you do that at this point in time without having the whole thing resolved.
You can't do something just off there right-of-way that...
No, actually, the actual pavement, actually, in one spot, the pavement encroaches over the right-of-way.
Yeah, there are pavement. You know, as an interim measure, although it's going to impact on your parking spaces, you could do something on your property, but it's going to take a foot or so out of your parking spaces which are already short.
Right. Well, it sounds like to approve, approve that, we need, we need a vote to amend the permit.
Yeah, I would say so unfortunately.
Pretty explicit, so...
Yeah, unfortunately, and then it may there wasn't...
And so that would require a quorum, which we don't have tonight.
When's your next meeting?
Well, we haven't...
Call Katrina?
We haven't set one yet.
Being that Dave has to recuse himself, would there be a reasonable assumption there'd be a quorum at that point? Would we have it? Even then, I'm just asking.
I don't know at this, this time. I, I can't answer that this time.
Well, what we'll do is we'll go back to Mass DOT and start trying to push them even harder, just try to get a partial approval for this.
Yeah.
And then we'll deal with this at a later time. It's just up to this date, they wouldn't do that.
Right.
But we'll, we'll talk to them and we'll look into the, at a minimum, the interim barrels along the entrance, which we have the right to do that.
Why, why are they asking for the improvement of the exit? Just because they have you now?
Yes. That's exactly, that's one of the reasons. One of their issues is, when they first looked at this and it went away, was the, if you extend the property corner out, the exit actually encroaches out in front of the abutte lot.
Oh, yeah.
They originally had an issue about that, but that all got resolved, and I hadn't heard boo from them since October until two weeks ago, where it all of a sudden all came back again, and they submitted a sketch showing we want this.
Can I see the other side?
Yeah. I mean, I don't think it's going to be this drastic.
Yeah.
I mean, what they're trying to do is, you can see exactly what they did, is they brought this curve in there.
And the return, so that the extension of that property line can...
Right. And I think what's going to happen is, you're actually not going to be able to get the traffic, we did a traffic analysis on this configuration, and you get a pretty good-sized semi up in there, you're actually more constricted by the existing parking back here than you are than by this.
Yep.
But leaving this site, even with this configuration, as big as it was...
If you're going to make a southbound turn, you're going to be in a northbound lane.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is, this just isn't going to work, so...
How about getting the abutter to give you a support on letting that curb run over in front of the extension of the property line?
Well, we're back into talking to them why they really need that, because the abutte's access is not even anywhere near this. So, that's kind of where we're at now.
I don't think there's anything the Board can do.
No.
Before you're there.
No, exactly, that's strictly, we're going to be dealing with Mass DOT.
So, you know, you might want to call Katrina and find her on our next meetings.
We're going to work hard to try and find a new member next month.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We can't do more. Okay, Ted?
Good evening. For the record, Ted Regnante, 401 H. Water Place in Wakefield, and I represent the applicant who is here with us tonight, Nancy McBride, and, I'm sorry, Laura McBride, not Nancy. Her husband, Tom, is not even with you. Peter Kane is the surveyor who prepared the plan. Let me give you a brief introduction as to why, why the A and R plan is being presented to you.
Do you have an extra copy, Ted?
Thank you.
I, I've been around a long time.
Mr. Bragg, we live here.
I used to, I used to live here.
I was around the border.
Yeah, for, for a few years.
He disappeared, I was...
We did some pretty good things, too.
Yep, he did.
Together.
Tom Gaines from Hamilton. Peter Kane. Dave Jacob.
So let me tell you what, what this is all about. Laura and her husband, Tom, want to sell their property, which is shown on that plan as 61 Fennel Drive. You may or may not know it, but the portion of Fennel Drive beyond the public accepted area is private, and there's ongoing litigation as to who has possibly prescriptive rights in the private portion of it. As a result of that, there, you know, this litigation is ongoing. And in order for Laura and Tom to sell the property, what they want to do is split off the lot so that the lot which encompasses the home, which you'll show, which is shown on your plan as Lot 1, containing 1.76 acres, all of that lot has frontage on Fennel Drive, the public way portion of it. And then, the second lot, that is Lot Number 2, which is the 3.89 acres, you'll see up at the top, at the northerly portion, there's like a triangular piece with frontage of, well, there's 98.05, 35, and 23, 42. That portion of that Lot 2 has frontage on the portion of the... That portion of that Lot 2 has frontage on the portion of the, of Fennel, which is private.
You're talking about this triangle here?
Yeah, that triangle right there at the top.
Right.
So, everything in front of here is, is private. The, the public portion ends just prior to that.
Could I ask you one question?
Sure.
How do you know where the private portion starts?
Uh, Peter can answer that, I assume, by the records.
I actually...
Because I couldn't find the answer.
Well, I think that's one of the, one of the roots of the problems.
Is it, is, does it date back to the approved subdivision back in, like, 63?
Yeah, I think so. There's a note in this earlier subdivision plan, that goes actually all the way to McBride and Rasmussen's property line right now, that says that the accepted, it's accepted as the public way to here, based on the town meeting vote, and that's...
What year is this?
This is 89, I believe.
In 89?
Yeah, 89. And that's...
And what does this plan say?
It's a subdivision, it's, um, the...
Except the, this part here?
Yeah.
Except it is a public way to this point?
Right.
On March 4th, 1963, at the annual Raleigh Town meeting, from Central Street to an included property of Charles B. Hazard's 3rd, which is what, that?
Yeah, and, and it also mentions that, that other plan, which is, Laura's all confusing, because there's, there are two plans that, that go with it. They mention that Plan 13126, unfortunately I have all my hands crapped in on it, but this is 13126, and it, this point here is the point that they reference, right here. And the math and everything getting all the way down Fennel Drive is the same on, on all the plans, to get to that point, so they seem to be showing, you know, public way here to the bridge, or to that point, and private after that, and that seems to be in, consistent with the 89 plan as well.
And that's consistent with what I read a lot, because I know it has, issues of formating.
On this one?
What do you want?
67.
You wanna also make reference to this plan?
No. That's what we did, you guys, just to document the, the improvements within the right-of-way, whether it's private or public, that was done, I think it was part of the litigation, not, not part of the A and R. That was just, you know, part of the, whatever they're arguing about.
So, in your best judgment as the engineer, this portion of the triangle that we've shown here does not, fronts on the private portion?
No, it's on the...
I mean, on, on other?
Yeah, all the frontage on both lots is on the public way, as far as I can tell. And this little piece of frontage over here, I mean, there's 194 feet of frontage for the second lot right now, minimum's 150, that was just to remove that from the...
But this is where the claim is, is here.
Yeah, yeah, right, that is where, that's where the gray area is, even though, from my point of view, it seems pretty clear that, that it's public down to here. Other people are arguing that it's, that it's not.
Arguing that it's in store, and that portion is in dispute.
The pavement is in...
In the litigation, in that case?
Yeah, in the litigation. So the only way of solving the problem is to get this out of the scenario completely, and that's why the lot line is put there, so that, if, if they are correct on that...
That it's private.
That it's private, it doesn't impact the validity of this lot, this lot's, the lot that they're trying to sell would have frontage on the public way.
Well, this new lot goes all the way around and connects over to here, so this is still a good lot over here with this just...
Yeah, it's an R-shaped lot, and then it comes around here and goes out here, right out to the triangle, but it's still a lot that complies, you know, with area, and complies with frontage, and complies with width.
Yeah.
Unbelievably, it complies with the maximum perimeter ratio.
Yeah, that shows you how ridiculous that is.
And this one complies also.
Right, and this one complies with...
Because you've got a big area and a lot of, you know, long lines, it's just that square.
I, I will see the, excuse me, the, the town assessor looked at it. His concern is that we, we create unbuildable lots that end up as tax title lane, but this one is still buildable.
Yeah, from a zoning point of view, it's buildable, whether it's from, you know, you've got extensive wetlands in there and other issues, but that's...
From our point of view, you know, we can't say we're not gonna approve this because we're creating unbuildable lots.
Right.
We can, and most we can do is insist that they be labeled as unbuildable.
As to the assessment point, I mean, right, right now, I think it's assessed as an unbuildable lot right now, isn't it?
From the tax rate?
51 Fennel Drive, I think, is assessed that way right now.
Because of the floodway?
I think they, my, from what I understand, they got a perk, they tried to perk it years ago, and it failed, so, so I think they maybe filed for an abatement or something, you know, the previous owner might have done that, I, I don't really know the, that's what I'm sort of hurt, yeah. But yeah, it does, it does, with this.
Yeah.
The reason we're here, though, is to make this a saleable lot. And the other thing that we had to do, this was the, this is the existing lot line coming down like that, and their septic system, they own both, they owned both lots, they own both lots right now, their new septic system, I don't know when you got it done, but it, you know, it encroaches over the property line right now, so this is gonna resolve that problem as well.
By getting it all on there, on the house lot.
You've got the point. In order to sell this, you know, we need a plan, so that the buyer is, is going to buy the, the house and the lot free and clear of the...
But why is that necessary? Because he has enough frontage here, so why would that, right? He has 150 feet of frontage from here to here?
181.
So, so why would that be...
This lot used to include this portion.
This is the, the way the lot looks right now, it's with this line right here, all the way over to here. Yeah. Yeah, this is Lot 1, and this is Lot 2, going all the way over here, so we're just, so this piece of disputed road in some way encumbers? Yes.
Well, that's what I'm asking, why is that?
It, it would encumber...
Get rid of the encumbers by bringing the lot line down, yeah.
But is it really an encumber? That's what I wanted to, but they're not gonna sell that.
Because it has to do with the derelict fee statute, you know, when you, who owns to the middle of the way, and so it, it has to do with from here to here, and the rights that are to the middle of the way.
Oh, okay.
I did go through the checklist, the A and R checklist, and it does meet all our requirements, and they have paid their fee.
Well, that's important.
Sean said that he does not like to sign off on the bottom of that as to 61 lands, and he brings it before the Board of Assessors, and they had just met, but he told me it, it's not under 61, not, not this thing is.
Yeah, it's not big enough for chaplain?
Right, there's a little sign off on the application, and I just, wanted him to look at that, but he said it's fine.
Any comments, Laura, are you still looking?
Uh, no, I don't see any issues, like, what has been proposed, I understand why.
I actually ended up doing a lot of research on this, because I was surprised, first of all, that the town clerk couldn't certify if it was a public or private way. We don't have a list of public and private ways in Raleigh, and I was given just a list of old town reports, and so started researching, and I couldn't find where that portion ended, and I came to the realization that that's a good future project for the planning board, possibly, is helping create such a list, so that we know which ways are public.
Well, maybe we'll get a full-time town planner.
Yeah.
Do you want this one? I've got an extra copy of it, this is one...
Oh, sure, I did take the book and page number, so, because I, I didn't find those in my search. Thank you.
Sure. What do we have to do?
Oh, we said to vote on it. Okay, take a motion to endorse the A and R.
I make a motion that we endorse the A and R.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Hi. Please, please, you guys have it.
Thank you. So, you've got the pen, so, okay.
Sign the paper first?
What is, what is your practice, Supreme? Are we gonna take this now and you make copies of it first, or how do you want it?
No, I think what they usually do is sign a paper and sign this. And then I can always get a copy by putting it online. Because it doesn't matter to them whether you've quoted it or not, it's really... I used to work with Tina Cassidy over in Beverly back, 80s and 90s.
Oh, so you remember me from Beverly, huh?
Always before.
Well, I've been around for probably longer than almost anybody that I know, but I still enjoy it.
That's what was important.
You know, it is fun to come, especially before boards like this, because they're good, they know what they're doing.
Don't need to let it out, Ted, they've already approved.
He's thinking ahead.
He's got a big project.
Are you, are you retired from, from the...
No, no.
None of us can retire.
So, no, this, this year, sometime. You're already retired? Yeah. Sometime this year.
More time for the pen? We got you, we got you right around 2:30, right?
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Nice to see you all again. Thank you.
Good paper, Ted.
Yeah, good to see you.
All right.
You guys have more?
Yeah, there, there is, there are several things more, but we just wanted to get them out of the way, because there was...
316, 320, Weatherstool Street?
Turket Drive would be next on your list.
Right.
Turket Drive.
Oh, okay, so Turket Drive. Yes, this was a submission by, of an Asbilt plan for, this is Tom, Tom Stark. Martin, do you remember him coming in? They got that first building on the right, and, and as part of their, this is good, I wish more people did this, but they, they prepared an Asbilt plan.
Oh, really?
Of, this, this is, this is Route 1, as you come in, and then they have their, their parking lot in here. That's, that was changed a little bit, we knew that was gonna be changed, I think the original plan had this, had some parking in here, and they decided they didn't need it, didn't do it. Their building, of course, they got a retaining, a retention pond out here where some of their drainage comes into, they did a riprap, slope in here down to the, toward the wetland. I, I recommend that you accept this plan, a letter to you dated December 21st, that you accept and approve said plan, so, such that it's a paper trail that they've accomplished this, and their requirements.
Can I ask, did, was it a condition of approval that they, that they supply us with an Asbilt?
Yes, yeah.
Is that usual?
Yes, it is, and, yeah, it's Condition 15 in their...
And how come not everyone does it?
Uh, don't know, because, you know...
Because they don't want their technical consultant funds back, because...
Yeah, that, that's one thing.
We have $833.50 that I have in expense voucher here, and if you sign, we can send back to Tom Stark.
Often when it, it gets done, though, when a property turns over and the, and the attorney looks at it and says, geez, there's an outstanding order of conditions here from the planning board, or certificate of conditions, and you've never submitted an Asbilt.
What is the slope on that riprap wall?
Oh, it's about 1 to 1.
Okay. 45 degrees. What's it made of?
Just, just cut stone, just, just...
Because you can do 1 to 1 with earth...
You, you would have insisted on concrete board.
No, I wouldn't, no. I'm beyond that.
So, I recommend you make a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept.
Second?
Turket Drive.
The Asbilt plan for Turket Drive.
Yes.
All in favor? I...
And is this, because you're accepting the Asbilt, is this basically your certificate of compliance, that they have complied with all the conditions and that they are completely done?
Not necessarily.
Not really.
Are there things left?
I don't think there is anything left, but that doesn't necessarily...
Landscaping, I wouldn't think, but...
Which one is it?
The G2. Well, I guess the question is then, when do you know when something is totally complete, so that we can give back the technical consulting?
Is there some left in that account?
$833.50.
Okay.
So, would you recommend that we give that back?
Uh, not without going through, you know, back through each and every one, I just looked at this one condition, usually that's prompted by them asking.
I, I thought their letter did request that this would, this would, or is that the other one I'm thinking of?
Oh, maybe it did.
You know, I'm eager to start giving money back, because I do have to get all the accounts in order, and this is Turket and Attachment C.
No, they just say, on behalf of their client, this is hand-tucked, talking, Richard Martin hereby submitting enclosed Asbilt plan of the completed project, this is pursuant to Condition 15, last evening the Raleigh Conservation Commission approved the issuance of the certificate of compliance, signifying completion.
So they're implying completion in that letter, so...
Yeah.
Perhaps you should be reviewing, should be reviewing?
Well...
Is there much to review, or?
No, I, I just probably go back through the whole thing and, and be sure that all the conditions, other conditions are met, I think for the most part, I can say right now, I'm not 100% sure it is, but I'll look at it again, I mean, if you want, it's sort of, you're sort of proactively moving this thing forward, because I don't think they really ask for that, but...
Well, there's nothing wrong with doing that.
No, no.
It's just very satisfying to be able to close the lot and say, yeah, all right, we're done with that, I can put it in the bottom cabinet.
I know, I know what you're getting at, and that's...
So, we'll not release the funds?
Right.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take another spot at it and make recommendations.
What's next?
Okay, 316, 320, Weatherstool Street, town and driveway for special permit. Is this right up in the corner of Route 1?
Uh, this is the three lots on the left as you come in for Route 1, that they already built the drive and all that's done, except they didn't, they haven't started any of the houses in there, and prior to them getting a building permit, they were required to, one of the conditions... Prior to the issuance of building permit, the applicant or his successor signs, buyer and or builder of each lot shall submit to the planning board a design and plan for the roof infiltration facility for each of the three dwellings. So, Meridian had submitted to me back, probably back in December or so, a, I'll call it a design, at least a supplemental, which I did not accept, because it wasn't specific enough, and they resubmitted three plans, one for each of the three lots, in January, with calculations in support of the roof infiltration facility for each one of those, and I previewed it, it's okay, and I'll send the board a letter recommending that you accept that submission in, as, what do I want to say?
And that's the last step before building permit.
Yeah, as, as compliance with conditions, so...
Okay, sounds good.
So I'll, I'll send you a letter in that regard, I just, I didn't have a chance to look at it until lately.
Okay, so is that it for...
Yeah, yeah, I don't think you need to take any action on that tonight, unless you wanna take action on it tonight subject to receipt of a letter from me to the board, you could do that.
I do know that, I don't know if you heard, but he has since found out that, that he is subject to stormwater by law, so I think he's gonna have to go through that process.
Okay.
These were all permitted before we adopted the stormwater, but that's a general bylaw, not zoning, and so nothing was frozen or grandfathered, at all.
Okay, we'll, we'll just table, yeah, I'm sure.
I think that's gonna stop him for a while.
Okay, moving on. That's, that's, but I'm gonna go ahead and recommend this, because that satisfies our condition as far as I'm concerned, even though it may not satisfy the stormwater.
Sure, right. Okay. Okay. Residences at Raleigh Country Club, Ralph DeJure.
I'm sorry, so you wanted to table that till next month?
Yes, sir. Is Ralph on it?
No, I'm sorry, Jill Man emailed, and they, they would like to come back next month, Ralph is gonna be calling Larry if he hasn't already.
He hasn't, he emailed me an after my cell phone number, but I immediately turned my cell phone off.
I emailed, I, I emailed him again, all the addresses, because I've already given him, you know?
What is the issue for, for the folks at home?
He, I just wanna make sure that he does nothing out there, that he does... He, I just want to make sure that he does nothing out there that he doesn't approve of, because now that they're tabling this a month, we still don't have consultant funds for him. And so we don't want him doing anything that needs Larry reviewing, until we get those funds.
Generally, in a month's time, and particularly this time of year, I don't think they can go that fast. They, they're required to put up some signage first, and work that out with the Highway Department and the Police Department, I don't know that that's been done. They've got, you know, they've got to get, engineers got to get in there and stake layout for the road. Generally, the first thing they do is clear, if they're going to work on the subdivision rather than on the buildings perhaps, you know, stake the road, and they go in and remove the topsoil, they stockpile the topsoil, get rid of some of the subsoil, so they start working on the base. I mean, they've probably got, they've probably got, you know, a couple of weeks of work there.
They've cut down a lot of trees, somebody told me that.
On the property, back on the property. It's not surprising. Yeah. So, you know, when I speak to Ralph, I'm, I'm just going to tell him that, you know, he's had an issue with the fees, and he hasn't paid any. Oh, okay. And I will inform him as to what I will inspect as a general rule and way of doing business with the board, and he's going to be subject to paying those fees, even though he hasn't agreed to, at least up to that point. Because if he wants to move forward, what, what small fees I'm going to have certainly shouldn't stop him. He shouldn't balk at...
I would have subsided a lot of the water department fees.
Yes, yeah, it was. Well, you know, you've been...
Construction, Larry and I did the construction, pre-construction, Katrina.
Yeah, 36 units at $3,000 each, right? $108,000 of fees for the individual hookup fees. And that's not for construction, that's just... No, that's just hookup fees, so...
Everybody pays.
And you wondered why we couldn't keep paint on the building with those kind of fees.
Yeah.
I, I did...
Not the water department.
Did, did everyone see the, the letter for the conservation restriction being submitted to the state?
No, oh yeah, I did see that, yeah.
So did that...
That's good. Okay, Down River Ice Cream, I think we did that?
Yeah.
Shannon States, I hate to bring this one up.
I, I still have not received town council opinion on this, which I'm waiting for, and she said not to do anything until...
Oh, well, that's easy then.
Yeah.
I moved that we postponed this.
Second?
Second.
Fast overwhelming. Is that it?
Correspondence, if anyone wants to talk about anything, because I, let me just look through quickly. I'm hoping people do go through the correspondence, because there is some important things that...
Did it get emailed to me, and I'll go through it?
Why don't we do the minutes?
But there's really nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do the minutes.
January 15th and December 19th. I've got some changes. Well, I guess we'll do the 19th first, does everyone have that? The paragraph that starts off Pierce offers, this is just a minor thing. In the last sentence of that paragraph, "Board agrees to delete reference to inserting language on the A and R." Should we just say "board agrees to delete language on the A and R"? Cross out "reference to insert it"?
Okay. Did you use "reference" twice there?
Yeah. And, under number 3, the cell tower, I don't think this is in here. I think we should just add the statement that these modifications will not increase the height of the tower. That's really the most important issue on this thing.
Yep.
Anyone else have a thought? Okay, and then, we can vote on both of these, both of these at the same time. The January 15th, "The board thanks Attorney Mann for her efforts in regards to this project." I mean, I don't think we need to put that in there.
Where is that?
Yeah.
"The board thanks Attorney Mann for her efforts in regards to this project."
Is it first paragraph?
It's, it's the end of, it's one sentence by itself, right above paragraph D.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you know, she's deserving of our thanks, but I don't think we need to put it in there.
Oh, okay.
At the bottom line, the sentence that starts Larry Graham did, is just a typo, it's take out the "are" in front of mentioned.
Oh, yes. Is that written?
And similarly, the discussion on the Rowley Village Green Development being named Heritage Way. In the last sentence of that paragraph, I think you need to include a "not", so it should read, it should not be much of a problem.
And let's see, the last sentence?
Last sentence of...
Okay.
Did you hear that?
It should...
Not be. Okay, anyone else?
No.
No.
I make a motion, someone make a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve...
December 19th and January 15th.
As-built and the corrections as-built.
Second.
All in favor, aye. I apologize, have it. Okay, we're done.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second. Aye.
We're adjourned.